Hey, James.
Hey.
I got you this time, you get this.
Yeah, but I was getting hair dressed.
Oh.
I had it. I ain't even finished getting my hair done. There's so many of us, and I said, "I gotta go to work session."
Everybody's up here.
I said, "Yeah, I know what I said. I said, "I gotta go. I just come back and finish getting my hair done."
We need to go back.
And she, well, she got some more wiggy. If not, I could have to wait till tomorrow to get some curls. I got the relaxer and the rinse.
Now you have these curls.
Yeah, I got a bit of a curl, baby.
I got you, David.
Yeah.
Hey, look, I was saying, good.
It ain't going finished. We have to get it finished for her.
You better show me how you do it. It was good.
Yeah, I ain't got it.
It's a process, right?
Yeah. I ain't finished it yet.
Have Mr. Black, I'll just say, I just go to the barber shop and say, "Cut my hair."
Well, hey, I don't have any hair.
Hey, look, I don't have any hair.
I think that he told me he might go twice a year.
Oh, I, okay, you got me. I go about six times a year.
Yeah, you guys work in an office.
But it's getting, those trips are getting longer and longer.
Really, when they go, my whole family loves us before we all go to the slay park. Like, you always come to town, go get your hair cut.
Go on, every time.
I tell you what, you know, this doctor, I said, "I trash them every meeting."
Yeah, I know, but...
And they ain't, and they nobody's taking a doctor, so I'm trying to see what the bill is. What cleaning they doing?
Do you know anybody who knows, has connections to city buildings? I bet you can find it.
Just right there. I told them what I told them. I told them, "Oh, no, not for me. This is council checkmate clean." We got napkins on the floor, doctor's hair in the empty, so you don't touch this area. At least y'all clean. We need to, the hours are so long. Yeah, I, I, I need my stuff pre-napped, the office stuff in here.
See, I'll be right back, James. I'll soon be in the car.
Okay, okay. So, who did, I want to put it in here for the school boy. Not yet.
Hey, James.
Then I got the time here for the, for the school boy here, who they selected.
I know, but they selected the nine.
Yeah. They selected, they have a school boy meeting till now. They, they selected.
Don't tell James, don't tell him.
I didn't know they were...
You didn't know?
I knew they were having a meeting, but they didn't say nothing about it.
That's who they gonna keep up with, because that's why they asked me, and they say, "Somebody just take me here and say, "Who was?" They supposed to tell the number. They just text me after I heard it. I called them, "No, not yet. This is coming in nine. You got, we'll be ready."
Yeah, I called them.
It's gonna be there.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm looking for them.
I used to air conditioner though.
In here?
Yeah.
I don't feel it yet.
I don't feel it yet, but you know, it's so hot.
Yeah, it might be, but Jerry, there, he the one controlling, he the one that gave it.
I have to turn it off.
Yeah, I just saw him, but you know, it's the way he do vote out state.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he operate, he know how he operate. He know how, he know how to turn it on. It should have been on.
Where everybody at?
I don't know where they at. If I could be the hairdresser, he ain't finished my hair.
I went to the board meeting, but they still wait.
What if they going to the city?
They still be out of the line for the heat.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, you can tell James.
Yeah, somebody just text me and ask me, "James..."
They had, they had the energy, it's like...
James Jones is right here.
Sorry, I didn't see him.
Yeah, they still in the gathering.
So, this could be, okay.
Okay.
James, she went there. Where's she at from local?
They still got the eyes for the evening.
Okay. Is Courtney's number 419-1994? Who, Courtney Washington?
It just feels good to stay in California.
Yeah, I was, uh...
Right.
What's up, Mr. Thomas?
Right, I'm David, yeah, James.
What's up? I said, "You could write an hour that essentially..."
Write a letter because I'm writing.
What's he up to? Okay, write it, it's all...
Yeah, the hour.
Okay, well, so what I need to write to get it?
I just say, you don't have to.
Yeah, I would like for the citizens to jump high. So, what, I don't know what to do. Tell them to write down people, people that are... Yeah, something to do, yeah, yeah.
I want you to sign up, say, "You..." It's all...
He does, he only comes to...
As he can see, I think.
There you go.
All right.
I ain't know all that.
Yeah, man. Try to get away. Yeah.
You tell me, you...
Tell me what you want. Trying, trying to do something. Yeah. Right, let's talk about next, next, I was supposed to say. And Courtney here. Yup. Hi. I'm listening. Yeah, I'm listening. It's crazy. You know, I said, like, that question.
Why not? Yeah, it sounds like it.
Hey, it's not there. God, that's a lot of... Yeah. Doing customs. Bro, who does that, man? They still have that, okay.
Okay.
It's... I don't know, we don't... It's like I don't know. Hey. This is what I got.
Yeah, Mr., you should have paid for fifteen.
I guess I don't know.
He did, so I didn't have to get it. No, because we didn't, Nikki, the, my ethnic, you know, very excited about the, like, I have to be, he say, "Yes, he is here." I didn't have, you know, information.
What he, and that, yeah.
This was God.
What, what?
This is, this is right. And here I went down, he spoke, he, they got, I was giving me shit, etc.
Okay, okay.
I'll get there.
Okay, I'll get there, okay.
Bye.
I'm in a special.
No, no, bye.
You're wrong.
Yes. Yeah, and they trying for you to go back in here. I didn't bother them, I thought.
Just wish, no.
Boy, they just...
Okay.
You gotta go get Mr., uh, Mr. Dale.
Okay, see, uh, we also see that's...
We need to get Mr. Dale to turn it out.
Okay, okay. I'm just looking, the hand that is, what you doing here?
Can we get, uh, some air, at Mr. Dale, some kind of air, please? I gotta see, I'll see, I'll get everybody else already.
You said you got it?
Yeah, I just gave it to Billy, but the other one, I read me and try me.
Um, so, my position, I believe. He called me, I guess.
This, something, don't get it.
You ain't got none?
It's not mine.
Don't worry, you know, we, our man, you know, what? You can't say I did something to you. Maybe it's all okay, man, because we both have feelings that they really, we both already have feelings that they really... But I don't have that, you know, what?
This, uh, trial, the next one, we have to be all better.
The actual, and the guy's... Now, uh, so, well, that's how fast I am, is she...
Chris, you're leaving on the next session, okay?
Oh, yeah, you can get it, okay.
My, I'm down with all the numbers.
He is just kind of...
I remember later, I had to wait, come back to the last one.
I don't have, I don't have... Share, push the hands left.
I wonder.
Yeah, but you should know me like that.
But it's like, you know, please, she was like...
You tried, you tried, you know, like, there's no...
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, that was, I had a... There you go. I'm trying to, there's something that you got to, just to have some luck in that, because there's nothing wrong with it. It's good, huh?
That's the point that I tried to make, it's not worth it. It's not worth it.
What do you have?
You say, "My, my brother..."
But it's, but it's... Uh... No, wait, okay. Uh, it's, 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 uh, it's, uh, so, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh...
Okay.
I'm not seeing it now, I was speaking. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get some of those, like, next, it's supposed to be, the, 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 I had, it's pretty hard to do. Look, it's hard.
So, little, my, 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 I say, I just, I, I, I think, uh, he has, he has, he had, he said, "Why?" So, now I'm gonna ask.
Good evening, everybody, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call to order our work session for today, June 23rd, 2022. Uh, now, we're having some internet issues, uh, so, let's have it today for the law wrong here, hopefully, those will be resolved, uh, momentarily. Uh, at this time, uh, we're gonna ask Councilman Jefferson, uh, please offer our verification for you.
About thirty seven, seventy, seventy-five, seventy-two. Come together, talk some issue, ask the proper, and ask the, your name, uh, help us decide on the right factors for our people to sell. Thank you for the mayor, thank you for the president, all the city council people, thank you all, my love, for the citizens and the civilians, the dads, count them. Thank you, God, for letting us in the right direction, leading us, guiding us. We ask for this, uh, this guidance from the, uh, running from personal problems in the city. Act, get it done, stop, come to the resolution, for the people of Salem, oh, my God, I'm asking your name. That's all that's up here, for the understanding, be committed to the city itself, as we did, the Salem was campaigning, and as we do, for the people of Salem. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be going through this situation that we be going through of providing a contract. Need to come together, to put our, put our pieces, now, this brings us aside, come together, build a unity. Be your name, oh, my God, thank you, thank you for everything that you do for us, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be in this situation that we in. But we need to be in a better situation, for the heaven of Salem, that's how, the people need us, they're relying on us. We need to stand up strong for them, to be a provider for them. God, we ask you, that you guide us and lead us. And don't turn us around, oh, my God, you push your goal, put the pressure on us, and we stand up strong for you, and we come together in your guidance, and we be on your guard, oh, my God. Your name is great.
Amen, amen, amen. Let's all stay up on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, you made me see through. Now, at this time, we're going to have, uh, our roll call, so council members, uh, please respond accordingly to your name of the call. Council President Young, present, Councilman Hartfield, Councilwoman Krista Thomas, Councilman Carmichael, Councilwoman Lisa James, Councilman Randolph, uh, Councilwoman Jefferson, Councilman Jefferson's president, okay, and Councilwoman Janet Thomas, and Councilman Michael Johnson. Thank you, council, for responding to the role, leave that record. Uh, now, we have our citizens' request, uh, on the, uh, agenda for the evening, we have, uh, Mr. Mark Neely here from MPG Consulting to discuss contract payments. Uh, and was there anyone else that was supposed to be scheduled to be on the agenda for citizens' concerns that, that, uh, we may have missed? Okay, I just saw somebody wasn't sure. All right, so we only have one citizen on the agenda tonight for citizens' request, and, uh, that's Mr. Marika Neely, here to discuss the MPG Consulting contract payments. We welcome Mr. Marika Neely.
Okay, so, uh...
Good evening.
And to God be glory. Uh, I'm here. Let me give you a little background, just a short background, my name is Mark Neely, and, uh, I want to speak to the citizens. I'm so, I know you're having internet, uh, issues, but I want to speak with, in fact, I'm so glad that you recorded, because it's important that we're transparent. So, speaking to the citizens, and I want this to be shared everywhere, uh, to anyone that's able to view it, uh, I'm a contractor with the city itself. Uh, I'm scheduled to be paid May 22nd. I've not been paid in a month. Let me give you the dates. May 27th, May 10th, and I'm supposed to be scheduled again to be paid tomorrow. My very first check was held by the mayor, and let me explain when I say held. I will report one place to get my check, and that's the finance office. When I go to the finance office, I'm told, or I see communication, that I need to report to the mayor's office. And I must, not I could or I can, I must have a conversation with the mayor. And the, my check's being held at his office, uh, where, in my opinion, when that check leaves the threshold of the finance office, one, without my authorization, and two, without being signed for, which I do every time I know, that check is stolen. I've not been paid, I do the work, and it's not just the work that I do, but it's the work that we do as a community. Uh, if the council could, raise your hand, if I have not done a ward meeting in your ward, if I have not done one in your ward, please raise your hand. I'd like the record to reflect that everyone has had a ward meeting in their ward, some have had two. And as a matter of fact, I want to, I want to plug, uh, Councilman Claymark, uh, Claymark in Ward 3 on July 19th, in Ward 3. Although I have not been paid, it is my duty and obligation, because I'm a citizen here in Salem, Dallas County, to help uplift our community. So, on July 19th, there'd be a ward meeting at 5:30 AM or someplace. The reason I have come to the council meeting is because I'm being bullied, I'm being attacked, I'm being intimidated, and I'm scared, no. I'm not scared, but it needs to be brought to the public's attention, what's going on. A lot of people like to hide behind the mayor, and I have nothing, I've never had a negative encounter with him, I don't know what his reasoning is with me, but I can tell you, um, that I've been victimized. And some people may say, "Hey, well, that sounds like you might even go to the police department," well, I say this, whether it's on the local level, whether it's on the state level, whether it's on a federal level, reports have been done. There is a ship happy, and I can tell you this, you want to be on this boat before it ships in. So, uh, to his employees, do not be intimidated. Sometimes you'll get battle wounds for doing what's right, but sometimes you have to stand alone to do what's right, because the time is always right to do what is right. Do not be intimidated. You are obligated to report workplace things. If you feel like something is immoral or unethical, report it. I do not speak for any council person, I do not have any ties as far as my contract, uh, personally, this is business. And it is bad business on behalf of the mayor to do what he's doing. I've not been paid, and there will be something done, directed or indirectly. Um, there were communications that were given to me that I am not, uh, I, I'm not accountable, uh, there's no supervision, uh, that I've never tried to reach out or sit and talk with the mayor and all these things. Well, I can tell you that in the very beginning, here's an article, this is before the contract was even, I'm gonna give this to the council, before the contract was even agreed upon, and this is in minutes. Before the contract was agreed upon, the mayor stood in a public meeting and told the council, "I'll destroy the city or the police department if they agree upon this." Go back to the minutes. Say, "Oh, Dallas County, I'm letting you know that this is being publicized, do not be afraid, stand up if you've been victimized, talk to someone, because it's time out for it." And I just want to leave you with this, that I can forgive, but I'll never forget how I felt from what I forgave.
Got you, Mr. Neely. Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Neely, uh, for coming, uh, to the council. Uh, I want to say a little something, are there any council members, uh, that would like to make any comments? And, uh, we'll start first with, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Janet Thomas.
As a representative for Ward 10, I would like to speak in behalf of this, um, Mr. Neely has been, uh, very strong in my community. My, 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 my community had, had a lot of issues, and my citizens in Ward 10 needed someone to come out and work in our community and talk to people. Uh, some of the issues that, we had crime, we had murder, we had citizens that were afraid of what was gonna happen. And we took the, the duty as a representative to, to serve the citizen, including the citizen themselves. Uh, when we would, at this program together, it was recommended by, to our, out on the municipality, what an A.T. attorney, when we got our American Rescue Fund, that we will have a program set up to serve the citizens, uh, in our ward, on the violence and crime that we had. And which we did do, we did, uh, have, you know, contract done, and he has done an excellent job, because anyone in our ward that has a problem in their neighborhood or anywhere, they could call him, and he would come out and talk to. So, I think he has served well with the contract, and he will be continuing to do what we need to keep our community together, and have our people to speak out and talk about what's going on in our neighborhood. And I appreciate him, and we do appreciate what you have done, and before you came there, you were attending our, uh, our warding. Before COVID came in, we had regular warding, and he was one of them, they came to our warding, trying to show the citizens, even took them to training, showed them how to take their, to, uh, use their guns. He took time, this was before we even got this meeting, he helped us in our ward, and I think to this day that our ward has changed a little bit, uh, by focusing on where areas that have a whole lot of problems, he has shown leadership there, and he has opened up a lot of senior citizens that they feel from, from the west side to the north side, all the way, that they can call him. He made it plain and clear with his knowledge, and, um, he has done a good job, he has helped, and we appreciate that, want him to continue to work in our community, because that's what we need.
Thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Janet Thomas, for your comments, uh, Council, look at the Councilwoman, uh, Krista Thomas, and then Councilman Hartfield.
Um, Mr. Neely has also done an excellent job in Ward 2. Uh, the council, uh, has seen a layer of, um, assistance in my ward on visual evidence. Um, she had so many great things to say about Mr. Neely, um, and the way he conducts himself when he comes out into our community. So, and then I received a text earlier today from another citizen from another part of the ward. So, he has been doing the work, and, and I just want to say, I think, we appreciate everything you're doing, and hopefully, this matters, we can talk.
Thank you, Councilwoman Krista Thomas, good comments, uh, Councilman Hartfield.
Yes, um, I too have had that, but, um, citizens, um, one, um, that's really all I'm gonna say about that. I, I do want to make a comment about the contract. Um, there are no deliverables in the contract, which the mayor keeps talking about, deliverables, there are no deliverables, deliverables in the contract. That's a good thing, that's a bad thing. We, as a council, in my opinion, anytime there is a contract for any kind of service, there has to be some kind of... So, in the future, I would encourage us just to make sure, and I'm not saying it has to be something huge, but there has to be, there has to be some kind of rule. This contract has no deliverables, why in the world, I don't know what the mayor thinks he's standing on, he's saying that you have to produce deliverables when there are no deliverables in a contract.
And, and let me comment on, on that contract, um, this contract, we also had our attorney appear, and, and from what I understood, he was okay with it. So, at that time, he should have said something about the deliverables to us, so, I just want to make that comment.
I don't like the, I hope you can offer one comment, if I may, go ahead. Uh, I came to a public safety committee meeting, a public safety committee meeting. I came to another public safety committee meeting. I then came to a work session, these are all public meetings, that was three opportunities prior to the contract being voted on, to work out any kinks that anyone needed. And I just leave it at that.
Councilman Johnson, the president, uh, also leading, uh, the middle way, but, uh, in the middle, this is my point. Um, I'm constantly, all the time, I want to know why a lot of this has come here, the president, I've been there, but don't, you know, each other, so, uh, I, I was just asking this question. Um, because they're in a way powerful, I sound like people trying to make you as well, to talk about this, you know, y'all know, y'all, uh... I don't know, I don't know what's going on with the president and the mayor, it's not even two, that, I don't think, y'all know, that was Snowden, and there, and Buried, and Karl Morgan, and Snowden. I wish, pray that it's changed. I don't know, I mean, you know... I don't know, I mean, you don't have need to come together, and like a birthday, boy, you guys going out to the president, please, I would be dealt. But I hope and pray that a lot of stuff going here shouldn't be, it should be resolved, and we're going to be able to shout, man, you shouldn't have got too much. But I hope and pray that we take time, as the president, please go ahead and move forward. Even though I know you do what you do, and I don't know what the problem is. Something wrong on some way. If some of this today, don't come away. If you could, to please explain to us, but I, I mean, I'm just seeing the level of dawn, just working. So they each one else saying something about you reach out and call yourself a time in two years, you haven't called him since maybe twice. But I don't know, please explain to us.
That's the best we could bring, and they're the names, true.
Well, I have, listen.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I could ask you, but I can't, I can't outside of, I can speak to you, explain to us, right? Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Johnson, um, since you brought it up, I'm gonna, you know, I, I subscribe to believe that I like to be corrected so that I may be correct. So I'm going to assist in making your statements correct. Uh, I think you got a little, maybe some things wrong in your statement. Uh, Mayor Perkins, in that memo that I just saw a few minutes ago before coming to the city, wasn't saying about this issue that we had not, uh, gotten together on it. He was not talking about this specific issue. Uh, I believe, uh, he was talking about, he has talked to me before about other concerns, that he had about other things. Uh, and that, uh, during the course of two years, uh, I may not have called him about anything. And he was correct on that. Uh, I call him when it's necessary. Uh, and you told me when I got on this council, you said I draw my mouth after meetings over, I don't hang out with everybody wrong. You told me that those were your words, and I'm not good enough. And, uh, and so I too subscribe to keeping strong, good business relationships. Because when you talk about a lot, when you start talking too much, you say the wrong thing. And, uh, I make sure that it's all about business deals, that I'm professional, and I'm upfront, and I'm honest. That way, whenever something comes up in a public forum, Billy Young can sit quietly, stand quietly, and say, he said this, if I said it, I said it. If I didn't, I didn't. So I don't put myself in situations where people can question my integrity. My main father, who I celebrate and think about every day, says, the only thing you have in this world is your name. And I do my best to keep a good man, whether I'm elected or not elected. And so I don't, Councilman Johnson, engage in prejudice. When someone admits and becomes personal, and writes memos and personally tries to attack my character, or attack me, or attack family members, I do what I was taught to do. Ignore and to focus on what is in the best interest of this city. And having Mark Neely serve as a consultant for this city has been in the best interest of the city itself. Mr. Neely, I want to say, and I'll get back to you, but, Mr. Neely, I would like to say that citizens have come to me by phone, by email, and have expressed their gratitude in the services in which you've offered to the city itself. And you sort of be committed for what you have done. You can't put a money value on the services that you offer. I know for a fact I've attended some of those war meetings, where you have talked with citizens about their concerns, where we have gotten together to try to construct ordinances and improve our ordinances, whether that's the noise ordinance or the leash ordinance, which we had so much other things to discuss, we haven't had a chance to get to. But I know it worked. I know how you have visited citizens' homes all times of day and night to address their concerns and bring those back to council members. I know how you have a relationship with our new officers that we bought on board, and how you try to help him with de-escalation. I know that you are in contact with our police chief, Chief Fulfer. I know the work that you do. And I think those council members that made their statements, they too know the work you do. And all I can do from this capacity is to say that I am very sorry, and that it's very unfortunate when one does not perform their duty and pay somebody for the work they're, they're doing. You, Mr. Neely, are not coming to this evening asking for anything that you are not doing. You shouldn't have had to ask, because we contracted with you. This city council authorized under the state of Alabama, properly approved a contract for your consulting company. And that contract was duly proven and can be reflected in the minutes. And so you began the work. As soon as you found out, you hit the streets right, literally. And so there is no question that you have not done the work. What's to be questioned is why you have not been paid for the services in which you have provided. And I will go on record to say that no one on this council, to my knowledge, has intended to stop authorization of payment. I further state that under the code of Alabama, mayors should not have the authority to veto contracts. So no one can stop payment on a contract that is duly ratified and approved by this council when it is in session. So, Mr. Neely, I am sorry, and it is my hope, it is my hope that you receive what is due, and that's your pay. Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, and we all agree with you. You're doing your work. You're doing your job. You can say, we all agree that my fault, what I put on here, too, is I don't understand why Mr. Young, the president. Go to the minute. You're the president. And totally, I'm seeing what the problem is, and come back and share with us, you know, I'm saying this. Of your age, you and him both be just like this, president and, 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 and. And I'm hoping that you go in the night, I'm looking at the camera, I'm signing that check. I mean, you're the president. And honestly, and let me finish off on that. I feel like that's your job. You're the president of the whole city, of all of us. Somebody in power should need to come in. That's your job to solve some of this problem. We shouldn't have to deal with this thing, and we shouldn't be up now coming up to eat that man right now. Go now to your hours. Some of us need to take, do what we need to do. Hey, I see our phones. Have y'all been on your phone before, call? And see where they want, but you won't be up now. You'll ask your phones. I know what I'm talking about. So what I'm saying, do your job.
You do you.
And I'm doing, I do your job.
Because there's some things that the board hates that need to be done.
And it's get done. I'm waiting just to cook potatoes, president. We got eight wards. I'm waiting in line to get my work done. I put my work in. I'm not gonna sit up and wait to eat works. They wasn't gonna pass a key to get this stuff done. I'm not gonna sit down and spend thousands of dollars to try to contract someone I knew I could did it done. And it's get done. But I respect the other several wards. I'm not gonna go, but we don't get my work, we're gonna be busting. Patient, big time, respect, until I even the mayor, I mean, the attorney. I'm not gonna bomb rush your business, I'm gonna be, but I'm gonna rest all the council members, I'm gonna stop helping. Respect you everywhere. So all I'm saying, Mr. President, no bashing you, no going off on you, but I'm basically saying to you, I wish and pray that you and the mayor come together. The first thing I say to you, oh, you guys want me? Please, Mr. President, y'all, y'all work together. This council needs so much stuff, so much movement, so much effort. And that now is a rank, it's a training, and it wasn't a lay. That's all I can say.
I do have one thing. I want to understand. The council entered into a contract, Mr. Neely. Mr. Neely did the work. The check was cut for him to be paid, and the mayor took the check. What in the wide, wide world of sports, Mr. President, y'all have to do that?
Go by now, but see, but see, go by now, see what the problem is.
Councilman Johnson. I want to say to Councilman Thomas, I want to make sure you complete your statement.
I'll spend, go ahead.
I'm all guilty. Now, in the statements that you just made about what my job is, what my responsibility is, uh, is that reading anywhere? What you just said about what I'm supposed to be doing?
I told you, by all I asked.
But, no, 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 I'll bet you said, no.
The mayor's the top, what y'all think?
No, it's Council Johnson.
You ain't got to do much, president.
And Council Johnson, Council Johnson, your exact words, words are important.
I, I said that.
Words are important. No, but you said it was my job. And you did not give why, can I ask you?
Go, go ahead.
You said that that was my job, Council Johnson. But yet you did not present me with one piece of paper, not one document, not one resolution, not one witness, not one statue, not anything that said what you just said. And you know why you didn't present me with that? Because you were wrong, and it doesn't exist. That's what you want my job to be. But I follow what the law tells me that I can do. Ladies and gentlemen, under the code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, section eleven, title eleven, implies what the duties are of council members, and what the president of council does. The council president doesn't have any more authority than any other council member. The council president, along with any other council member, only has authority when the council is in session. And we are having meetings when we are thought. The code of Alabama does not say anything about where the young city council president Selma, Alabama must go to the mayor to discuss. If anything, the open meetings actually does not impound upon having outside conversations. In other words, the law clouds on deal making. Billy Young don't do deals. But Billy Young was right. Billy Young promised the people of Selma, Alabama, was the only promise that I say that you can go back and look at it. Is that I'm always going to do what I believe is best for Selma and what is in the best interest of Selma, Alabama. Billy Young, I get behind that cutting deals, ladies and gentlemen. And that is an issue. An issue. When they talk about me, they do, they're talking about me because they don't know. And I was, Council Johnson, I thought, which don't know more than the young. I don't get behind closed doors and cut deals here and cut deals there. You can look many times at these council meetings, where I wake up my mind, when I hear both sides, whether that be the mayor or a council member, and then I tell the truth to the people. If I can't go, then I don't go with it. If I can, I can. My yes is yes, and my no is a no. And sometimes I'll give you an absolute no. So, sir, I have not completed. As I afforded you the opportunity, I hope that you will get over it, to say out of respect. But what I am trying to say, Council Johnson, is I don't get personal, and I have not gotten personal with the mayor, nor any other council member. There are rules in this council. If you actually look at the rules, if you take time to go back and look at the rules of this council, we really should not attack any member of the council. There is a rule in our ordinance that says when one is to make a statement, they are to address the issue and not to address any council member. We are never to attack. And that's what, but no, sir, you're not right, broken rules. Because you broke them when you attacked me. But in love, in love, in love, and respect, I'm just reminding you of the rules. Because that is my job, is to maintain order and form at these meetings. And I do my best, sir, to try to maintain respect and decorum, and I you watch. I don't agree or anything else. What I do subscribe to is to do my call. And that's the title of the law, to listen, to listen to what people are talking about, and try to make the best decision for all my people. Whether my people are black, white, Latino, or any other color. But I say, everybody in Selma is my people. And whether you go to a forum again, or whether you're black or Latino or any of those. Everybody in my people, I have a responsibility to offer. I don't have a way to. Sir, and thank you for your service. Let's give Mr. Neely a round of applause. So for the audience that are here to actually present regarding one of those items, I think I see Mr. Randolph from the Housing Authority. So, Mr. Randolph, are you all here related to, let's see, the item number three, authorization to partner with the Selma Housing Authority's bid application. Yes, Department of Housing and Urban Development, Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant. Is that the one that y'all, y'all? All right, well, Mr. Randolph, is that associated with you? You have a force, sir.
Well, thank you, uh, to the council president and, uh, council members. Uh, it is our hope at the Selma Housing Authority to, uh, improve the quality of affordable housing for our citizens of Selma, and not only the citizens of Selma, but citizens of Dallas County. And so we all know that we have aging infrastructure and, and the property that we're currently own our own, you know, for, for, uh, lack of a better term. And so my goal as the president and CEO of the Housing Authority is to make sure that we reposition our assets, make sure that we bring all of our assets up to the quality of affordable housing that's current. Uh, and so in order to do that, we have to think outside the box. We have to take different methods and take different chances and different opportunities that are presented to us. And so one of those opportunities that is presented to us is, is called the Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant. And I'm gonna allow Damon, uh, he's coming, Mr. Damon Duncan, who's with Policia Ventures. I'm going to allow him to, uh, explain this grant more. But what I want to bring from this grant is to be able to revitalize GWC area, to be able to revitalize the downtown community and areas surrounding GWC. And so there's a stigma, uh, with And so, there's a stigma when it comes to revitalization of GWC. They say, well, if we demolish, what are you going to do with the citizens? But HUD requires you to have transitional housing. And even if HUD did not require to have transitional housing, because who I am as a person, I would make sure that we had transitional housing. And so, one of the things of this grant is to find where, where that housing will be. And so, that may be building new developments. That may be rehabbing some of the dilapidated home during Selma. That may be building a new home. We don't know. And so, this planning grant is a part of, of the plan to figure out the revitalization plan for GWC downtown area and the areas surrounding the GWC community. So, council members, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Damon Duncan to have the presentation. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor.
All right.
Thank you, Honorable President and Councilors, for this opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Randolph. But again, let me introduce myself and give you guys some context here. My name is Damon Duncan. I'm the owner of Planning Consulting and Development, Policia Ventures, based out of Atlanta, Georgia. Mr. Randolph has been in our services for the purposes of going after the CNI or Choice Neighborhoods opportunity. And so, what I'm going to walk you through is an overview of what Choice Neighborhoods is and the potential that we see here in Selma itself in terms of being competitive for this, this opportunity for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And so, by way of background, I've been in the industry of affordable housing for thirty years. Started in nineteen ninety-two, though twenty twenty-two marks a milestone for me. I worked at several housing authorities. I've been the president and CEO of three housing authorities, Elgin, Illinois, which is a suburb of Chicago, the city roughly two hundred thousand people. Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority at the County Level Commission. And most recently, Montgomery Housing. So, and beyond that, I've done a number of redevelopment, urban planning transactions throughout my career. An adjunct professor at Auburn University's in the class of urban planning program. And so, enough about me, just wanted to give you some context in terms of our background and our skill set to be able to discuss this particular opportunity. Choice Neighborhoods is currently HUD's signature program. It is the primary tool that HUD has created in its toolbox to perform major community revitalization. There are some other tools in the toolbox called rent, rental assistance demonstration, and a couple of other tools, section eighteen demolition disposition, voluntary conversion. These are small redevelopment tools that are relegated specifically toward public housing development. Choice Neighborhoods, again, is a comprehensive neighborhood strategy that also focuses on distressed families as well. The core goals of our program focus on housing, of course.
Yeah, is that better?
That's better, yeah. I'm a little salty. The core goals are housing people in neighborhoods. Again, one of the most comprehensive aspects, because we know we can build rooftops all day. Mr. Randolph can build rooftops, can build affordable housing, build some new affordable housing and tax credits and so on and so forth. But to really impact the people is what this, this planning grant aims to do. And to really affect the neighborhoods that have been affected negatively because of the distressed public housing that has been in its community for a number of years. That's what I agree with. And so, there's several housing people in neighborhoods objectives, I won't rule the wrong of them. But on the housing side, HUD is really promoting sustainability, efficient homes, smart homes. They're promoting, they're getting out of the low income public housing business and getting more into the mixed income housing business. That is extremely low, low, moderate, all the way up into market rate. So, this program is designed to achieve that objective as well. People's standpoint, we want to increase employment opportunities. We want quality healthcare. And we want that to have quality locations, affordability, and we want to promote effective education. Because we know it has been disinvestment, that's largely because the school system's challenged. And it tends to be a cycle effect. You got high crime, affordable housing issues, school system challenges. So, this is the only program that I know about that brings those elements together to try to address social heroes in various communities. So, now, there are two types of Choice Neighborhoods grants. One is the planning grant and the other is the implementation grant. The planning grant, which Mr. Randolph has hired us to write for him as a maximum award of five hundred thousand dollars. That award is up from four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year ago. And overall, HUD is looking to make upwards of twenty awards, but typically they make ten or eleven awards. So appropriations have gone up for the Choice Neighborhoods program under Secretary de Budge. The second type is implementation grant. If you're successful with a planning grant, you go through a twenty-four month comprehensive planning process and you finish with a transformation plan, a document similar to a comprehensive plan that the city has to do. And you submit that to HUD along with some leverage and match funds and all of that. And you go for an implementation award. Those awards are up to fifty million dollar awards, which is up from thirty-five million a year ago, but they're leveraged upwards of, up to five hundred million. Selma Housing Authority went after an implementation grant back in twenty eighteen. I believe, and some of you may have been around the table, without going for a planning grant first. And sad to say that that grant was not funded. So, Mr. Randolph is taking, doing the first things first. And then he's going to, I'm sure he's going to tackle the implementation once we're successful with some comprehensive plan. So I just want you to be sure to understand the differences in the two types and what we're presently going after. Next slide, please. Here is, this is a snapshot of the awards that have been made since the conception of the program in twenty ten. And actually, Choice Neighborhoods replaced a previous program called HOPE Six. That was the major revitalization program in the nineties and in two thousands. But these are, you know, kind of, you can't see the dots very well, but you see the number of planning grants awarded, which to date is at ninety-six. And implementation grants are at forty. And some housing authorities or municipalities have received both. But you see the number of planning grants exceeds the number of implementation grants. They're obviously putting larger pot of funds and much more competitive. Next slide, please. I want to touch on just some highlights here. And I don't know if they provided these slides for you all with entire copies, but just some data to show you. This data HUD has put out to show the results of planning grant. You cannot talk about the housing, the people in the neighborhood approach. From a housing standpoint, thirty percent of the redeveloped HUD assisted housing, public housing or other HUD assisted housing has been redeveloped. Of those fifty percent is sold without an implementation grant. And what that suggests is that a planning grant is now a failure if you don't get the implementation plan. The planning grant should have aspects of it that can be implemented with or without an implementation grant. But that's specifically what that data speaks to. From a neighborhood standpoint, seventy-four percent completed neighborhood improvements of those sixty percent is sold without an implementation grant. And from a people aspect, eighty-one percent of the new resident services, that are services that aren't currently in place, new enhanced water services. And of those fifty-six percent is sold without an implementation grant. So, my point in showing that data is the planning grant within itself can yield a lot of results if done properly. It doesn't have to result in an implementation. Whereas an implementation grant is optimal and hopeful, is not necessarily a requirement in order to help transform communities. Because you can see by the data, communities have been on the path of transformation without the large windfalls. So there's value in the proper planning process. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you a bird's eye view of the awards that have been made in Alabama. In twenty twenty, Montgomery Housing Authority received four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a planning grant. I led that effort as the CEO of Montgomery Housing Authority. In twenty nineteen, Huntsville Housing Authority received a planning grant award of one point three million dollars. Now, the reason that award is a lot of, because during that particular year, they were, they've increased the award so that you can do an early action activity to demonstrate that the community is ready for, ready for a planning grant. The planning grant awards are not that large, ceiling on the five hundred thousand, now like I said earlier. And in twenty eighteen, the Housing Authority, the City of Phoenix, of Frederick Brothers Homes receives a planning grant of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Next slide. And then I have highlights. I'm not going to take you all the way through the summaries, but this, this is the targeted community for the Huntsville, Alabama project. And we listed the dollar amount to target neighborhood, the targeted property, and the key partners. Next slide. Same thing for speaking city, key partners, and the targeted neighborhood in the law. And finally, Montgomery, key partners that we've also taken the goal to be partners in the planning grant. Next slide. As Mr. Randolph indicated, the impetus, the starting point is to distress HUD assisted housing. That is the starting point. That is the prerequisite to qualify by which you can apply for these dollars. You must have a HUD assisted distress. And there are several different missions that speak to the level of distress. We did a high level assessment and we have an assessment coming up within the next week or so, a fiscal needs assessment where we have engineers coming in and testing structures and looking at a number of other data that's going to go into the application to further demonstrate the distress of the property. And as you, as you all know, it was built in nineteen fifty-two. It is on our historic site. So if in fact it does receive a planning grant, we're going to have to get approval from the Shippensburg Office, the State Housing Preservation, Historic Preservation Office in order to, to move forward with any type of redevelopment or anything like that. Okay, we show this now to show that the targeted neighborhood is consistent, but I can't see the colors that well, but the area, go to the next slide. Yeah, that's not showing. Go to the next slide and then we'll go back up. This area that we created here utilizing the GIS mapping tool that HUD has on its website, we drew some boundaries after meeting with Community Economic Development, Ms. Wooten, meeting with Mr. Randolph, understanding where GWC is approximately downtown. And we strategically created this boundary to maximize the points. Now, when I say maximize the points, when you draw a boundary in HUD mapping tool, it spits out data for that area within that boundary, extremely low income data. It spits out vacancy data, among other things. And what it is, is that map is shaded. So the deepest shaded areas, what we focused on, because we wanted to maximize our opportunities to receive funding. So the most severely distressed puts you in a better position for funding. So this, this is the picture that we came up with. And we met with Mr. Randolph and demonstrated our strategy. We wanted to capture, Mr. Randolph wanted to capture downtown to help to revitalize and give downtown economic boost. And we wanted to include the Edmund Pettus Bridge as well as the adjacent park space there. We know that's slated for some investment, because we want to tell a compelling story. HUD loves compelling stories, where they can demonstrate that an infusion of funds helped transform a particular community. And there are very few communities that have a compelling story like a Selma. You all know that and I do. We were able to demonstrate a compelling story with our city of New York application in Montgomery a couple of years ago. Similar history, but Selma has its own unique history, and we're trying to include that history as part of our, part of our compelling story and part of the boundaries that give us the metrics that we know they are going to be successful. You can't see this, but what we have here is a budget. So we have five hundred thousand dollars. We have the accomplishments that HUD shared, the S J shared, and the city of Selma shared. We're going to go back to five hundred thousand dollars. U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Remember I told you that the planning grant ceiling is five hundred thousand? The housing authority is putting a hundred thousand dollars toward this effort. And we're requesting for the city to put a hundred thousand dollars toward this effort. The reason why we're doing this, because we were very successful in Montgomery with the identical approach. The Montgomery Housing Authority is not for profit, put a hundred and five thousand. And the city of Montgomery put a hundred and five thousand. We had a match, we went for four hundred and fifty, and had an additional two hundred and ten. Made it more compelling and it demonstrated that the city was joined at the hip with the housing authority, this revitalization effort. And, and, and money speaks. So HUD have a very impressive effort. And then our threshold is a five percent match, which a five hundred thousand, five percent is nominal. We want to go above and beyond. And I'm here to tell you that that's what makes for, go to the next slide, a very successful allocation. Okay, that last dollar, I highlighted everything, all of the deliverables that we assigned to the city. And this is not something that is in stone or can be. But we just demonstrated what we've known to be successful, what we've done in other places, allocating these dollars in this way, because the city liked to see hard deliverables. Everyone wants to see hard deliverables associated with their dollars. But this way is the way that we can clearly demonstrate that a market analysis, a market study, something, you got a tangible product. It didn't just go into this, go into the overall pot and get absorbed. You can see tangibly where the dollars are going. Next slide, please. And then I had five frequently asked questions. And one of them might be one of you all's question. But I'd just like to open up to, to the council, any question that you may have. And hopefully I can.
Yeah, so I've been, when we received this, I did a lot of research on another tech. And I was looking at your map. And now I hate poison, but now I'm reading and finding out something else. I saw the diagram over there for the location of the map, which it is in the downtown area. And also, it's in an area where you have two councilmen. You have the councilman, Kempson and Johnson.
That's two and three, correct?
Yes. And I looked at, and I understand now, it, it, I had to, we do a lot of reading and follow up some stuff to say. But I do see that it's, it's good, it's good, but. I understand it's a for housing, it's for the rebuild something here, like in Fort City. For that data point, something like. And my, my question deals to, with the groundwork in that area, where that location was taken, take out those towers. What are you planning to do there? Are you planning to maybe greenery? Are you planning to come in and build new stuff?
You, you asked a great question.
I, I, I asked that question because I, I did, but I'm looking at all of my business. If you asking the city, you asking us the mastermind. But I look at all the location and the location in there, what coming, which is really do needed. And I wanted to know, what are you planning in there? Are you going to do greenery? Are you going to build apartments, such as you're calling?
That depends, Councilwoman. We don't have any plans.
You don't have a plan yet?
Because the purpose of this grant application is to get with the community to go through a robust community planning process to map out the strategy for that community. So going into the application. So going into the application, uh, what we do is, is, is demonstrate our partners, uh, the willingness on the part of the city to be a part of this effort, uh, to be able to leverage funds and, and resources, and demonstrate the commitment, the community engagement, meeting with the residents, which we've done a couple of times already, having town hall meetings, charade, and mapping out a complete, uh, inclusive strategy to determine, and at the end of that 24-month period, you have a transformation plan that will answer that question. All right, Council, I know you may have a couple of questions, but the time is seven, going to now. And so if you have some additional questions, uh, please get that to us and we'll get that, uh, to, uh, Mr. Randolph and all the others. We want to thank you for coming this evening, and for having to speak to us, we really appreciate it, and look forward to future conversations, thank you. All right, thank you so much. All right, were there any other, uh, individuals with any other, uh, issues that need to present under the mayor's report? Any others? All right, so Council, uh, you do have items, uh, from the mayor's report that have been submitted to us. Also pay attention to fact that we received some additional emails since the original mayor's report was sent out. So make sure you go over those emails, there may be two subsequent emails that we received since those reports went out. So, so make sure you didn't get them.
No, I, I didn't get the last portion. I don't know what's why I didn't pick it up.
All right, before Tuesday, we will make sure that you receive all of the portions of the report. So Council, go over all of those, uh, different items, uh, and on Tuesday, uh, be prepared, uh, to act on those items, either through consent, or through vote up or down, or possibly if you determine some additional questions. Uh, the report was very extensive, over 100 pages. I'm sure, uh, some of us are kind of anxious to complete, and so the question process will take honor of the additional material for us to review. So take the opportunity to review, uh, and bring your questions on Tuesday if you have questions. But we will prepare a considerate that is useful, and also prepare for all those items. All right, any questions? Again, there's a lot of material that everyone needs to go through, so let's do that. All right, let's move on now to our business items. Uh, Councilman Carmichael informed me that he would be with us this evening, but he did ask me to bring up one or two, uh, items, uh, the SRA appointment. He's going to recommend that we vote on Tuesday on this Mandy Henry, uh, to take a spot on the SRA, Secretary of Government Committee. Uh, as you all know, we did appoint three individuals earlier, and one of them was not, they didn't fulfill the appointment. So this was, uh, the appointment that Councilman Carmichael has recommended, that is Mandy Henry, uh, taking the place of Judge Armstrong. He couldn't serve, and so we chose not to serve. And so he's asking us to take that up, he's preparing the resolutions, we'll go on that, vote her down on Tuesday. All right, the next item, the Marita contract, he said, uh, that's for taking care of. And he's thinking, uh, we discussed that, we're going to take appropriate action on that at a later time. Uh, this is very anxious, the city trailer, we discussed that, we'll discuss that later. Uh, the salaries, uh, for fire department, uh, we discussed that, and, uh, we wanted to have a finance committee, uh, later to discuss those salaries. Uh, because whether you realize it or not, uh, while we are solving right now, uh, the, uh, city, uh, still has obligations, uh, to make. Uh, you all know we do have bond payments that we are making, and next year sometime, those bond payments will increase different. Uh, now two of those bonds will hopefully satisfy sometime next year, so that will help us some. But we still have debt that has to be serviced. So we're knowing that we have this debt that has to be serviced, we have to be very careful with our expenditures right now. And we all, I think, I heard everybody say, they didn't want to give the fire department a raise, because we are hopefully wanting to work towards providing them with that. But we got to make sure we have the funding, uh, for those rates, those tower entries. And so, uh, Councilman Carmichael, Councilman Arden, all of us will get together for a finance meeting, meeting appears soon. And then once we have it, we discuss this plan and other proposals on council members. And then maybe we'll have a special call, a meeting just for the purpose of firefighting salaries. So hopefully in the next week or two, we'll have that meeting and be able to discuss these matters. And also remember, what we do now will reflect, because it's budget time. And, uh, actually, next month, July, we start the process of getting ready for our budget, and hopefully we will avoid the pitfalls that we had last year. Uh, what we did, what I did like last year, and I think some of you said before this, we operate in the public. We operate here in the council chambers, you get a chance to see it on Facebook, on Zoom, you hear our sessions. We are operating in front of everybody. Transparency is a name word that's thrown around, but we were very transparent with that budget process last time. And that we will maintain, where we will hopefully hear from all of the department aides on what their needs are, their wish list, everything that their need, we will discuss it, send it back to the mayor, and then make appropriate vote. So we'll follow that process, where the mayor presents us with a proposed budget. We hear and have hearings for all the department aides, hear them one-on-one, those schedules. You all remember that last year, we were having them all every week, but that's our job. Then after we do that, come back, work on something, prepare a budget, send it to the mayor, let the mayor review it, he offer us his recommendations based off of that, and then we vote on Friday before October 1. We have to have that done before October 1. So sometimes September, we'll vote on that. But, uh, let's keep that in mind, uh, it is something, uh, that's a little bit of Councilman Arden's field, but forgive me for that, but Councilman Carmichael wanted to add it up. Uh, now we move on to items for, uh, Councilman Chris Thompson.
Good evening, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
Does everyone have a copy of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we talked about this at the last, um, work session. The recommendation, um, for the personnel board, we have two names, Carol Bate and Kirby Wimberly, um, so asking for the council's federal proposal, um, on whether they will want those to be with you.
We've got a resolution two T at 21, so that's 22. And, uh, those are the recommended individuals, uh, to fill the terms on, uh, the personnel board. Any questions? All right, we'll be preparing for all that on Tuesday this way. All right, Councilman.
Um, I guess, I want to talk a little bit about how about power ledger bill. I guess I have a question for whoever can answer, um, should I expect a treasurer? To the council meeting on Tuesday?
Uh, Councilman Arden, we, uh, hope, uh, to say something to the mayor and to the treasurer, and we were going to request that she team agree with us, so hopefully.
Okay, but she probably. One of the things that I noticed when, you know, we had already spent almost, in four months, what we spent in the whole year last year, uh, I just find, I think that this was two months ago, and, and nobody in the, on the executive team has bothered, even they have found out why that's the case. It has not been reported back to us. And, you know, I've been a CFO 25 years in the product sector. I've never seen anything like this in my life. This is just the craziest mess I have ever seen in my life. I noticed around the place paying for streetlights, I don't know if there is a coding issue or categorization issue. I, I hope this will be here. Figured out. Uh, super bill, uh, I have several, um, constituents in my ward that have, that have called me and said, hey, I'm on, uh, I have a set tank, I'm on city water, but I have a set tank, but I'm getting charges for, I'm paying for, for super also. Anybody should, you know?
I look into the, if you write, uh, well, the, the next one will be, we need to name. Okay. You need to name, and we hold out a black pen, it's, uh, come on, come on. We're looking to, which is the perfect fact.
But listen, can I, the official, the president, can I just, can we invite this president to jump up the video on this car, car? Uh, he makes this name, yeah, this name goes on with life, but even my life here from my father, I'm from, like, four, five hours increase. I, I know the cost of the acquisition, the units are working a much harder amount than here, but, uh, we get invited into the council meeting on Tuesday, that's another good thing to solve the problem, that's a lot of questions that we need to be, need to be asked, uh, about my life.
And Councilman Arden, I want to say, why don't you, I was talking to some individuals that are in the industry, the power business, and they say that one of the reasons that they believe, they're not sure they looked at our individual, that, but this was just, make a speculation. They said that perhaps during that time, from the 2020 time period, that a lot of people was helping them work for a moment. And so there meant I did a lot of people in the offices all day long, running power all day and setting up. And that since COVID is, you know, COVID being lifted, and more people are back at work, they're burning more lights. They said that maybe, because they see that in some other, uh, places, where the power bill has gone up from last year's time. Um, while talking to that person, uh, that person, uh, has recommended that we bring someone in, uh, to talk to us about becoming a smart city, which means like, uh, with bulbs, small bulbs, and sockets and everything, that way when people are in a room, the lights are on, and then when they leave, the lights go off. Uh, sometimes we have issues where people leave the light on, um, they leave stuff running, and so they were talking about maybe going to, uh, become a smart city. And so sometime in July, we'll be hearing from a company who will have, they're going to, I gave you their number, Councilman James Thompson, uh, because you're over public bill, and so they'll be contacting you, uh, and hopefully you will schedule them to come talk to us about maybe using, uh, smart technology for our public bill is, uh, to try to reduce, uh, our expenses. And so that was just something that came up, and sometimes they will be, uh, as chair of that committee. And so that was just something that I told me, Councilman Arden, that was one share, if you, if I was still alive.
Can I ask you a question, old Richard? Are you, one other section when you say about the bill, is it that, uh, the way, uh, we find out now about, uh, about the money that in, that's supposed to be in the, in the nine item for the Alabama power? Is that, is that really what you had directly saying?
Yeah, if, if you remember a couple of months ago, we had, we had already spent, we didn't have enough money to pay that much power bill in the budget, because we had already spent on power bills, the money for the whole year.
And, and that was kind of.
It just doesn't make any sense.
And that's what I was kind of trying to figure out too, because we never had that far. We, I, we hear that, we think we never had a problem with being, uh, uh, power bill, we didn't have enough money. So I'm trying to, that's why I was trying to see what you were talking about, is something that went wrong in the, in the nine item to make them out, not be there to cover us up.
Well, I don't think it's a budget item, it's an actual charge, because I moved in the actual charge.
Mr. Wilson. That's a document, isn't it also somewhere on Highway A that has involved that building as well, correct?
Well, I'm not sure, I haven't seen it, I do, I can say my, my, that has nothing categorized to it. I don't know, so, I don't feel this.
The county pays a portion of it. The building is out of Highway A in line, I remember they correct. Because, uh, when I was working with the recreation, we paid a portion of the county. Because uh when I was working with the recreation, we paid a portion of the county. It's best, so the county also pays a portion. So if it's an increase on our, it should be an increase on the county's, in the, in the, in the, in the. And that's why this is what I have, if my mind serves the correct, I think that same thing.
And the only reason I'm possible to do, I expect us to do better. And, and the fact that it came to us from the executive branch that says, we don't have enough money in the budget to pay the power bill this month. And I said, why not? What's going on? I don't know. We just need money to pay the power bill. Okay, well, can we find that? Yeah, and here we are. However, long ago that was, and we can each a little bit.
You said that our baseball bill, state baseball bill, since nineteen ninety, they're done on you, so that should be easy to say, those deals have been looking weak, because we're not playing for all of this, that.
Well, that was a day before, that day was a day before. Oh, yeah, the twenty twenty, this day.
That's even now, we still have, you know, twenty cities that, uh, for baseball, softball, uh, land and all, but those bills are closed.
And all power bill, I'm going to try to, try to get you out, because we're stewards of the finances. So that's a question we need to know, why the power bill, that's a question, give a question, is it real or not, Bill? So you certainly a question for these people. And so thank you, Councilor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we will request the authority to come. I read that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I read that request, Mr. Park, I'll come back.
I need to get a memo, and ask the hard basically to trade like on the long result, on the, on the cloud, okay?
All right, well, keep working. All right, uh, Councilor Thompson, as you have, next point, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Wait.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Uh, I want to, uh, so we can, you would, uh, two weeks need to go around. We don't have to be out there, two weeks to be out there, Cap, we've done it.
For June, yes, ma'am.
Um, in July, I'm trying to, uh, do, I got a lead, so, you know, training, and it's not here. And it is, uh, I would have that training where I'm going to train, and I'd like to invite any other council member that wants to do that training of July, it will be, you know, because you know, graduation is in, uh, October. And if anyone else would like to do that training to, uh, with coming to graduate, uh, in October, they might be in there for those, uh, training hours. My next one is, uh.
You have the data.
Yeah, I have the, hold on a minute, I got it.
Eleven.
It's all day, it's all day.
Go ahead, man, great.
Uh.
We, we can, anyway.
Okay, okay. Uh, my next, uh, uh, come, uh, we have that lunch, we do area with Terry, so the fish to seven and the archery back, you need to, uh, focus, maybe you can sketch up, uh, obviously, seven. Well, there we go, no, no. Yeah, I got it. I did, I got my phone. Do you get it from me? I'm about to leave him, just type in your email. Yeah, it's in, it's in our email, thank God, email. In our email, we had an issue, we do it every, you know, the other mayor, and the council, of the city, of the issue, Sarah, there. Uh, my next, my next question is, we, uh, I want everybody, and I also, citizens, take time, and, uh, we have, uh, Melissa Calipari, section, section code eleven dash forty-three dash eighty-four. She will give us all the information of our duty, uh, of our trader, of what's required her, um, the mayor's, uh, anytime the body of the council, our trader, to report, uh, estate law, council with the department. And we ask her to report to the body of the council, what I can't believe, or anything like that. You can go there and you can, uh, read that section code, that, that forty-three, eight, or I would like the public to look at that, too. Citizen itself, you understand. Uh, next, uh, storm drain project. And my, my concern is about this storm, storm drain project. We spent, uh, this was done under the administration of Dario Nelson. It was divided between Ward Eight, Ward Seven, and, uh, I think you, if, if, um, Sam hit, I put, it's about the four, four boards. And my, I'm very concerned of the way that, um, the project in, in our ward. Uh, for months and months, uh, they've been in Ward Seven. I, I have sat back and watched. I have seen three separate, uh, contractors coming. I have seen them hold the country, I have seen them hold the country, back up and pull it again. And my problem is about, we always get bad, the bad end of these contracts, and I, you know, not here. We get the, uh, cut, uh, some of the things that are broke all up, I see this again, and I have to represent it in our, in our ward, I want to speak out. It's not fair that you come into the community when we have our plan and our director and our engineer are supposed to be looking at this work as they, as they do it. And, uh, it looks bad, it looks real bad. It doesn't look like, uh, uh, work that's coming from a professional contract. And, uh, it broke up, there's some of the drains that broke up, and you're coming in after teammate to hold it together. Do you think that's gonna last long? But in our area, the money that we, we voted on for the duty in our ward, uh, they come in rushing, trying to finish up our project, and, uh, they're busting sewage pipes to be in bust in the area, and, uh, we just getting a bad deal with this, uh, uh, with this storm drain in our ward, because it's not doing it done like it should, and I'm very upset. I've got, we got, I get the board on Union Street, we got, we got a bad deal. No one will come back and clear it up, we had two different contracts in there, and we're supposed to have storm drain. If we go on Union Street, right through this, see what we got, the money that we spent, and what we're doing now in Ward Seven. It is unfair that our engineer and our plan developed is not looking, making sure that you can, uh, 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 watch, and it's, it's not fair. I would like to see you be done better, rushing, trying to finish up our project, I don't see how they're gonna be finished with that project. We don't get a bad deal with that. Uh, my next, um, is the, well, it was the Avenue of, uh, uh, Cyber. Um, they didn't send us an email on Avenue, where they, we can do the webinar, that we can watch. Or they give us some information on the each council member. Uh, I don't know if y'all got it, I got the email, uh, that, uh, we can have an opportunity to see some of the things that can help us as the, the next big branch, uh, develop our, you know, webinar in our, in our city. So y'all can look at that, um, check the email, because I, I received this from, from Avenue. Um, I want to share some of these important things that we've been looking at, and we've been talking about in our city government, about uh, our side room is something we need to get our city together, and they want to show us some of the things that can protect us from uh, being, you know, like it was both, when down there we see, and you say we have been hacked and all that. They're trying to give us some good information. Also, uh, I'm not getting anywhere, and I was reading something in my, in my, I don't know, I, uh, following the code and requirement, and the purpose of taking training. Uh, my work order, uh, citizens' sale, uh, as a representative, I am only your representative to hear your voices of your complaints, and I put the work order in, and, uh, I keep asking for a follow. But by, by law, in our section book, it says that by ordinance, we can request by ordinance that our public work director or someone comes to our council meeting and give us an update on our work order, where we at, uh, or what's going on, what we got to do, council got spent some more money, we get this taken care of for the citizen. It's not fair to the citizen that has been up there already. And, uh, nothing has been done. We're almost going to the end of twenty twenty. So me as the representative, I would like to talk to you, to the two problems that I have, I'd like to move on, I would like to serve my citizens, I waited, and had, and one had been out there and this person deal with this creepy, so I would like to, um, ask Jerry Wood, to go out from Cedar Drive, deal with, uh, on Carol Street, with the problem we've been dealing with for three years, uh, that's where my oil lease is from. That we'll take care of that, and also I'd like Jerry Wood to go on Cedar Drive with, uh, public work director on the intersection off of Summerfield, like he did on Ten Avenue, where a portion of the street, uh, need to get there as they come off of Summerfield. That's some other things I would like to work on, and so when I get money, I'll put it in there, because I'm not.
Councilor, Councilor Thompson, at Tuesday's meeting, like we've been doing those requests like that, and you could read those to the court on Tuesday. We'll give those.
Back.
Yeah, I was saying, let it remind you, doing it on Tuesday, so the court can take it.
All right, all right, thank you. And my last one is, uh, is, I, I want to report from the city attorney, uh, two, about the easement with, with the, uh, carrot. And, uh, I'm on the, can I be, this is an emergency, I want to get someone, uh, this president, uh, I can do that. It's emergency, uh, that we can get someone out there to this carrot home, and, uh, get that, on the city, uh, city easement that's taking over their property to their home, uh, to get someone in there immediately. I put the work order in, no one had been out there, and, uh, we are pouring into our hands, uh, this is from the time this carrot came, it's both, no one has been out there, no one has. And, uh, we know we turn a moment, you come back with something Tuesday, you give me that, for the city, uh, easement in their property is taken over, you know, it's hot, snakes coming out, I'm gonna try to go here and take care of that.
We'll bring that back again Tuesday.
Okay. Um.
That's all.
It was one, I wanted to add to you the ad, but, go ahead, I, I'm sorry, but it said four now, I think, on this. I have, but not, but it's, it's very important, you go ahead on yours, and I, let my mind, you come back to me.
This thing, thank you. All right, uh, the items I have, uh, rezoning of nine oh one and nine oh three, How Avenue. Y'all remember, uh, St. Paul's Episcopal Church came to us, we as a gentleman, they came to us to talk about rezoning those properties that were on nine oh one and nine oh three, I think they're gonna turn the business into something, some kind of gear process, and don't try to remember.
Yeah.
They came to us, they spoke to us. All right, thank you, Ms. Ellis. Uh, and so, um, we were supposed to go on this and make it on place on first read at the last council meeting, but the, uh, attorney failed to give that to us. Uh, and so, uh, at that moment, they were here that night, and I asked them, I apologized, uh, that we were not placing it on first read. And so I told them that I would request, uh, that the ordinance be given to us, we didn't have the ordinance. We have the ordinance, I talked to attorney Campbell over there, and so they emailed the ordinance to me, to them. And I emailed the ordinance to Liz Dunst, and so she'll get back to everyone. And so I told them that because we did not have it on first read, like we were supposed to at the last meeting, that I was going to ask the council, uh, to suspend rules at our next meeting, so we could vote it up or down, uh, because they have a patient wait. And so I'm, I told them, all I could do is ask, if you all can decide whether or not, y'all.
Do you agree, um, that this was an argument?
We, uh, they created, uh, they created the on ordinance from, but there's a rezoning, they gotta rezone that specific area. And so for that particular property, they created the ordinance, and we'll send it out, we, uh, send that out to you later.
Who cares?
Nine oh two, listen, nine oh one and nine oh three, How Avenue.
Isn't that the property of, of Sherman, what's his name?
I'm not exactly sure who, uh, but I know St. Paul's Episcopal Church owns.
Yeah, that's what I was looking, I looked at that address, so that's me, I was, I don't.
Let's back up a little bit, okay. But they, uh, requested, they remember they came, they give a presentation for us. Uh, and so, you know, hopefully, if you don't have any questions or whatever, uh, if you have some questions for me, let me know, and I'll refer those questions to attorney Campbell. If you do, I'm in line, get that to me. Uh, and by Tuesday, we'll be able to take another one. All right, and, uh, then the next item was the bill permit fee, the ordinance. Remember, we have a revenue committee, and, uh, all we want to do with the ordinance, uh, is to modify, uh, the fee in the ordinance, uh, to raise it to one thousand dollars for a film permit fee. Uh, and then we want to place in there, if the request is made, uh, less than fifteen days, then they would have an extra nine feet, and the total will be fifteen hundred. Everything else in the ordinance will stay the same, uh, everybody who's exempt now on the ordinance will be exempt under that ordinance. We're just changing the fee, that's all. And that was a recommendation coming from the revenue committee to try to raise additional revenue, uh, for the city. So we'll have that ordinance, uh, uh, ready for first read on Tuesday. Uh, and the constitution's to stand and go ahead and make the king, but we're gonna request first read for that ordinance. And we'll send that out to you over the weekend as well, but the only change in there will be the fee. Everything else is the same.
So it just will be the one that's above them?
The fee is, just a few minutes, every, all of those words, we get that same, they'll just have the additional fee, uh, to one thousand, fifteen hundred, uh, if it's less than fifteen days. Okay? All right, um, the next item, uh, is the update on city debt. We still don't have a completed, um, picture of the city debt, but it's all, but like I said to you earlier, please keep that in mind when you make decisions, uh, that our debt, uh, that our, uh, bond obligations will go up some next year. But also will satisfy two of them, so keep that in mind, and when I get an update, I'll give that to you. Uh, the next item is a letter of engagement with Copeland Franco. I passed out to all of you all, a letter, uh, attorney Bobby Segal, uh, for Copeland Franco, uh, and I went to him uh, to discuss issues, uh, that the city council, uh, was having, and so, uh, to give us some help on some legal issues. Uh, asked him, uh, to give us that engagement letter, uh, and, uh, it has within the document what the costs are associated with it. Uh, and, uh, it also says, to forbid costs, when you have questions for the lawyer, instead of everybody complimenting my heart, and wearing a little hour, you submit those questions to me, and I will submit those to the attorney. That way we won't be double, triple, quadruple, uh, than just be one. So when you have a question for the attorney that requires, uh, an answer on something that's important, that we can't get from our current attorney, and we be using, this is not a replacement, let me be very clear, this is not a replacement or removal of our current city attorney. This is just an additional legal hit, because we have a lot of legal issues that have come up, that need responses to, uh, in a timely fashion. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, brother. Uh, the check, uh, is he on?
We reached, we reached out to him, and he said at this time he was not interested in offering a service. We did, I, I personally reached out to him, and at this time he wasn't interested right now. So, we, we, with Copeland, go ahead.
And I would like to say, the, the, the new council, um, this, this Copeland Franco, this firm, and Mr. Segal, he is, uh, direct with the, uh, municipal laws, and he is one of the best that keeps this council out of trouble and keep us according to the municipal laws and, and make sure that we are operating right. He had to do it for us before. So, you stay in the book, we're the same strength, and you make sure that we do it right.
And, uh, goes beyond in the legal community, uh, not just the state and the nation, attorney Bobby Segal, that is so, that goes without saying. Uh, he's top notch attorney. All right, so please, we'll go on this, uh, Tuesday over now, uh, and that is, uh, the engagement letter, uh, with Copeland Franco, uh, attorney Bobby Segal. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the next, uh, item, the building funeral home application. If y'all remember correctly, they did submit, uh, an application, uh, for a cemetery, uh, and, uh, we are very grateful. The council took the vote, and from our point, we approved to allow the application to go to the health department. Okay? And so the, uh, health, so after a while, um, the health department finally received the application. Uh, and, uh, the health department has now notified that they are approved, uh, for that property. Uh, drainage, sewage, and iron, whatever, all that they approved. I'll send that to you, uh, the correspondence that we received from the health department, we'll email that to every council. So now, per this section, I spoke with attorney Campbell, uh, this afternoon, and, uh, now it is left up for the council uh, to vote, uh, and I'm not sure, it may, the mayor may have to approve as well, but the council definitely asked to approve. So, uh, the council, I will be placing on the agenda, an up and down vote on approval of the application at Tuesday. Uh, but we did get the approval coming from, uh, the, uh, health department. Uh, and I'll check this section to see if it's vote, but I do know the council asked to vote on it, and they approved. Uh, but that's the council, it's on, on Tuesday. And any questions about that? That's really old, that's unfinished business that we just sent back to, but we're trying to move the ball down here. Uh, at this time, any committee reports, or any committees that would like, uh, to report. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Thompson.
I, I, I'm waiting on to hear from the day, uh, I think I have a guy with information from the day. They gave you a day here for, for the, for the building meeting?
Ms. Jane.
Sir.
They said, uh, in the email that you probably haven't gotten, it hasn't come through yet, it said for us to go ahead and set a date and let Ms. Bennet know when she needs to be there.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm on work on these two guys at the time, so what they, y'all, we need to do this soon.
Yeah, I mean, we need to have a finance committee next week, too, if you want to try to get it on the same day.
All right, we're the same day with y'all, it doesn't matter, we need to take care of it.
Uh, next Thursday.
What time?
We can do building at five, and it won't take us for just a minute.
Okay.
Jump in the finance at five thirty.
All right, you're right.
I was gonna make a prediction, so.
Okay, yeah.
All right, any other committees, uh, need to report at this time? Any others? All right, uh, I made my, so I'm gonna report on the public safety, uh, committee on Tuesday. Uh, we need to have another coming meeting soon. Go ahead.
Please, because we want to give, uh, a good, some good news to the city of Alabama through the public safety committee that we are going to, with the chief, all his chief for us, and, um, you know, the coo, all, everybody, the mayor, everybody, and this is gonna be good, but it's getting stale.
Yes, ma'am, that's good.
When you have your meetings, we won't make that down, but we got your work on the table.
Yes, ma'am. So we, since, since June is almost over, look forward to a public safety committee meeting sometime in July.
Okay.
All right, very good. Any other committees need to report, any other committees?
Not a committee, but just, um, I just wanted to let you all know, I just got a tick, you know, two board met today uh, to choose a, um, to recommend it, um, and they showed Dr. Bakhtiy, her, um, her.
A mobile, a mobile?
I'm not sure where.
Was that a?
He's a mobile.
He's a man.
I swear to you, it's a guy.
He a man. Not, that's one, I seen, I can look at it.
I'm hoping that it should come out.
Okay, but okay, all right.
Let me look into my name.
Yes, go ahead.
Be right there on my discus, come back, hold on.
Where, where do I need to go on?
I've got hold of this contract, but I've been, uh, you know, I brought to y'all several times, I have free recipe. Uh, well, we have, uh, the, the, the city property, they go back into their home, the alleys, I wouldn't call them that. Because they have to go in, out of the car. We have, uh, asked them to clean them out. And no one has done it, it's been in there for month to month. We have asked them to clean them out, and no one has done it. It's been in there for month and month. And I had waited, we got our money, which I know we can do it, it's public safety. And uh, I want to bring the, the contract over to LaMarcus Snow, not my contract, but it's a.
It was.
Yes, for LaMarcus Snow, it's three locations. One on uh Duke's and the other one off of Washington, both ends are overgrown, uh, this is uh Mrs. London McDonald, she had people call the city, and uh, no one has, they promised her that she'd call me. She had two states, she came out on the porch, and uh, I, I had to go right there. And I told her, I promised her, we gonna get this done, and I been holding it. We got our money, we gonna owe this money, so.
Can you send those, uh, send us a copy of the invoice, I need.
I will, I will. I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll just reach out.